What did I do now? There we go. I'm just waiting. I won't. Promise. Just waiting for our stream to start. There we go. All right. I call this committee of the whole agenda meeting here in City Hall Council Chambers at three eighty-nine Spruce Street in Morgantown, West Virginia on Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four to order. Quick note, committee of the whole meeting is of the Morgantown City Council is intended to provide an opportunity for the council to receive information, ask questions, and identify policy options in an informal setting. No official action will be taken at these meetings. And at this committee of the whole meeting, the first of the things that will be addressed in our presentation is first up, we have the Morgantown Utility Board and the Cheat Lake View PSD presentation by the Director of the Morgantown Utility Board, Mike McNulty.
Good evening. Just for a little bit of background information, how we got to where we are today. Glenn Stanton, who was the Chairman of the Chief View Public Service District, passed away back in April of two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Stanton was Chairman of the Board, Founder of PSD. He had worked, been with the PSD from day one. And after his passing, the board felt like it was time for them to move on to the next phase of allowing the Morgantown Utility Board to consolidate with them for the benefit of their customers. So in May of twenty-three, the first step that we took was we filed a joint operation and maintenance agreement with the Public Service Commission, which was approved. But I want you to know, we operated the system from day one. After Mr. Stanton passed, we immediately stepped in, provided service, so no one went without, if there was a leak or anything. We took care of it. And we took care of it from time to time every time he called. So we argued for doing the work. We did the billing, collections, media reading for many, many years. So it was a very natural progression. And on May second of this, this year, the Public Service Commission issued a commission order, approval, consolidation of Morgantown Utility Board and the Chief View PSD. So as part of that, we had to incorporate their tariff into our tariff, which we've sent a draft over to, to the city, to the view. And a couple of things that I feel are very important. Number one, the city of Morgantown will not in any way whatsoever subsidize Chief View PSD customers. They have their own cost of service. The rates that the Public Service Commission has already approved are adequate. There is no rate increase for their customers. All we, the only change we are making is the leak adjustment rate. Because they will no longer be sold for resale customers, we adjusted it down to our rate, which is the right thing to do, because you're not going to be paying that anymore. So those are really the highlights of the consolidation, again, there's no subsidy, there's no rate increases. It's just pure transaction. And I'll be very happy to answer any questions.
All right. With that said, anybody that asked any question?
Was Mr. Stanton the only person running that operation? Did they have employees or anything?
They had some part-time employees, then full-time employees.
Will those stay on with MUB, or will they be discharged?
No, they were contract employees, and we will not contract with those full-time employees.
You must have explained it very well.
No, no, I'm curious. The facility that you were putting in of at Cheat Lake, is that part of this transaction too?
With the sewage treatment plant?
Yeah.
No, sir, not at all.
So this is removed, this is further out?
This is, this is just part of the water system. And the Cheat Lake Sewer is a standalone part of the.
Very good.
Completely separate apart.
So this is much more comprehensive though for the MUB service in that location, in that?
We were already set, we were, we sell water already, and we perform all of the maintenance items than we were before. At any time he needed help, he would call, we would go out and issue that.
So you're drawing water from here in Morgantown?
Yes, they're serving.
Pumping it that far out?
Yes, sir, we just pump the water out.
It's remarkable. I don't know that I conceived that, I thought of perhaps some sort of tap into the lake or something.
Yes, sir. Comes right from the tree.
There you go. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mike, how many customers are involved in that?
Uh, it's about forty-five.
Thank you.
Have a nice day.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next, we have from the West Virginia First Foundation, our Region Four representative. Welcome, Mr. John Bauer.
Thanks for having me. So I would be much less formidable than that was. First, I want to thank you guys for, for being the first group to nominate me. Uh, this is a passion of mine. I'm a person of long-term recovery. Uh, I feel like my entire life and career is meant to see that we don't do the same thing with the opioid payment money that we did with tobacco payment money. It's unfortunate that that money was misappropriated in many ways. And I wish I could come here and tell you guys all the wonderful things that the First Foundation is doing. But I was elected about a month ago, and had one board meeting, and right now I'm drinking through a fire hose. Um, I'm trying to get up to date on where everything is at. What I can tell you is the, the board from where it's at seems to have a lot of quality individuals that really have an intent on making sure this money is spent well. They have elected an executive committee, they have started doing some subcommittees. There is money in the bank, and now there is an executive director who was the previous person that I'm feeling, filling the remainder of his role. And speaking to that, he, when the eleven showed up, they drew straws, one-year, two-year, three-year straws. Jonathan picked up one-year straw. So in other words, you're likely going to see me coming back to you when I'm ever asking you to re-nominate me for another election, because I don't think six months is adequate to really make an impact on how this is going to play out. The good news, money's growing every day. So they're approximately just shy of one billion dollars of interest that's coming to that board on a monthly basis. So we're likely to see not only the amount grow, but one of the things I think that many cities and counties were unaware of is the first dispersment of money is not the only dispersment of money you guys will receive. There is approximately seven to eight years of dispersments of, of money that are coming your direction. For what they said at the, at the election that when I was at, the eighty, somebody from the AG's office was present, the first dispersment is likely going to be the largest you receive, but you should anticipate additional funds coming your way. The First Foundation has no opinion on how you spend those funds or what you do with them. That would certainly be, talk to the AG's office or your personal counsel, but you have a pretty good MOU that gives you kind of some guardrails. I, I generally say it's narrow and focused and ambiguous and, and granular details. So you can spend it a bunch of different ways, but there are some guardrails on it. Really, I came today because I have met some of you in, in different, different settings over my lifetime, but haven't really heard from you. So this is less about what I want from, from the city council, more about hearing what you need. Obviously, I'm going to be one of eleven votes, but as you can tell, I'm a loud individual. I really don't need this mic. And I'm a previous servant as well. So, you know, my intent is to try to make sure that Region Four is represented well. And approximately forty percent of the state's populations are, are region of, of West Virginia. Even though there's six, we have a disproportionate amount of population, and I hope we get a disproportionate amount of funding coming into our region, and we'll do everything that I can to make sure that occurs. The First Foundation's not going to change it. It's going to be the organizations inside of your community that understand what the requests are for funding, that have the expertise and support to make sure that they write well-drafted requests for funding proposals, and to ensure that they're looking at outcomes. If there's one thing that I can tell you that the board has been very high on so far, although nothing has been set on stone, it's that they want to see outcomes with the money spent, not simply we're going to spend the money and then hope that, that we get a better result. Unfortunately, our state has done that for too long without really getting the results that we want, evidenced by someone like me standing here talking to you at, at this meeting. So I digress. I'm happy to answer questions from you or to, to do anything that I can to support the wishes of the city council, but I thought it was important I represent you for you at least in my face. I am continuing to work on a listserv, so you'll get regular updates from me. Unfortunately, when I was elected, the county commission handed me a piece of paper with seventy municipalities on it and just mailing addresses. So no phone numbers, no emails. So for the last two and a half to three weeks, myself and some of my staff have been collecting all the phone numbers, all the points of contact and email addresses, so that I can have some regular communication and collaboration with all seventy, one says seventy, one says seventy-three municipalities. I hope it's seventy, because that's what's in my spreadsheet. But with that, I'll be happy to answer anything that I can for you guys. Yeah.
So if you're looking at people spending money in ways that could have outcomes, not every municipality has access to or maybe the wherewithal to evaluate however they spend their funds. So one thing that your group could potentially do is work through some methodology where there was some look at the outcomes or offer of a group that, or a couple of groups, so that it was mixed bit of who was evaluating. But it would be wonderful to see something like that, so that if five different communities spent funds a certain way, there was someone who looked at that and saw what the efficacy was, you know, mixed between all of them. So you ended up with a, a sample of different ways that the money could be spent. So I don't know how that works. I don't know if you've thought about that, or that's already in place?
So I can tell you that they're building a plane and flying it at the same time. So while they have drafted bylaws and some policy and procedure for the board itself, when it comes to formalization of requests for funding, they have limited that thus far to legal counsel, to investments into banking, and we, we haven't seen expenditures. The board is aware and anticipates meeting federal requirements for a foundation, which is doing at least, or five percent of your total gross revenue has to go back down. So that could range anywhere from ten to thirty million that we'll likely see expended prior to the end of the calendar year two thousand and twenty-four. So as I said, I'm drinking through a fire hose, but I've learned very quickly. My world is grant world. I'm an executive director of a nonprofit with a fairly diverse grant proposal. So I'm used to writing grants, writing grant narratives, and reporting. And unfortunately, when it comes to the state end of reporting, they're sending data up to the federal government. So to say it's arduous and cumbersome and not always apples to apples would be an understatement. I think they will try to simplify that process and try to make it so it is a tangible data point that really does show efficacy without burning out half of the amount of funds to collect the data to then report to you guys that you'll listen to for thirty seconds and kind of move on with your life. I feel like that's what happens with San Francisco CDC, but about half of your grant funding goes to collecting data. Data's important, but data is data, and I can make data say a lot of things that will make it look a lot better than it actually is.
Yes, to all of that, particularly that some information is probably not needed. Some information is probably needed. So sorting through that and doing whatever needed to be done efficiently and well would be great.
I appreciate that, now to make sure that that gets.
Good luck. But, but I just, I've talked to other municipalities who directly already received funds, and we're talking about the ways that the funds could be expended and concerns about expending, there's always concerns about expending funds improperly or not correctly, or some version of that. So anything to make it less intimidating, like what you're saying, and, and effective would be good.
Yeah, like, it's, it's kind of guardrails.
Like right size, like right size it to who you're.
If you could write a document more ambiguously, I would like to meet the person for can do it, because it's real big buckets.
Yeah.
That is written in such a way that anything that really touches substance use disorder, you could finesse your language to fit inside of those guardrails. Having said that, I, I truly do believe the individuals on this will try to tighten that ship up to make sure that, we're all aware that it's founding board members working to create legacy. If we develop the policies, procedures, and bylaws that will be much more challenging to change once they're set in stone, when this group steps away and the next group of individuals comes on and is both appointed and elected across the state, it will be more challenging to have a, a repeat of the tobacco settlement from them. And purposefully, why it's not in the government's hands and in a private foundation, I think that that was good foresight.
I have a question.
Yeah.
What are the subcommittees?
So right now, I am on expert panel. So we will develop a panel of experts from each one of the, the main five sectors or six sectors inside of the state. I do believe there is a committee that's directly on finance, and that's all that I'm currently aware of, because even in the minutes, you know, there was a lot of, we went into an executive session, and I've been on a bunch of boards, so I know what that means. They didn't want that information disseminated for whatever reason or the other. I was told for my first board meeting, you clear between two and a half and four hours of my time, and it was, I believe, May sixteenth. It lasted forty minutes, so I had, I did an introduction, kind of like I'm doing to you, there was one thing proposed, which is a committee meeting that's in Bridgeport next week. And I thought that was just going to be a workday, but I got the agenda right before it, and we're having dinner at seven P.M., so I guess it's a workday. I, I would imagine you're going to eventually see some committees that are going to review some of the requests for funding proposals. I, I would imagine above and beyond that, there's likely going to be, they, they did talk a little bit, and I don't know if there's a committee specific to this, but doing a needs assessment. So while the state of West Virginia does a needs assessment, they do it for their purview or their weapons or what they need, really looking at needs assessment for the entire state and then reach the specific, and what was talked about and seemed to be important to, to the rest of the board members.
Thanks for being here.
Yeah.
I appreciate you wanting, being willing to take this on. So it sounds like you guys are just kind of working on the formation of how you'll disperse funds as of right now. In terms of what kind of, is there any kind of talk or ideas about what kind of community input is going to be had in terms of crafting RFPs, in terms of?
I have not heard of anything yet that, that talks about community input. I was a big advocate for a person with experience to be on the West Virginia First Foundation, because I remember my friends died because of opioids. I feel like maybe their voice should be heard at the table when you get a bunch of money related to it. I also think family members deserve a role because they've been impacted widely. But what that looks like, I, I think we're a little bit too infant stage to really consider what exactly that looks like.
The, the things, I guess, maybe I'd encourage is just, I don't know if you've looked at the kind of like white papers and stuff like that coming out of vocal Kentucky, who have kind of like a roadmap for how to dispensate opioid funds and the things that they kind of suggested based on evidence-based practices and stuff like that. And one of the things I saw in there was like in Philadelphia, they just had community stakeholder meetings for smaller grants. You know, it's still two million dollars, but for those smaller grants, you have community stakeholders that all come together and kind of decide how that's going to be spent, people that are directly impacted and people that work with people who are directly impacted kind of decide how that funding gets spent. I would encourage that, and I hope you can be a voice for that kind of participatory sort of grant making and funding request, but that, that would be something I'd like to see, I guess.
So I have a previous relationship with the, the Vice Chair, Matt Christensen, because I was a committee chair of the office, or the Governor's Task Force on Substance Abuse and Prevention. He was the previous Director of the Alcohol Drug Control Policy. So we worked together for like his entire term there. And I had the same conversation with him about, we have large institutions in our state. We, with, with all due respect, we have WB, we have Marshall, you know, University of Charleston. These large institutions have epidemiologists and grant writers and all of the administrative support of the sun that you're never going to see at a grassroots level. But concurrently, what I don't want to see, and this is just my personal bias, is a bunch of new nonprofits popping up just to write funding requests as an intent to get access to funding and not have a track record that they're doing something that brings them that change. So I do, and in fact, not, not to speak too, too out of tone, I think that Matt understood what I was saying and that I was advocating for the small guy, because I was once a small guy. I'm still just big now, but I, I was once a small guy that didn't know how to run a grant and didn't know where to start, and somebody had to help me, and I would hope and advocate for the First Foundation having some type of support system for smaller, limited resources, grassroots nonprofits that really can make an impact in your community.
Yeah, I, I guess I would be most concerned, not even necessarily for us, but like in smaller rural communities where things like supports that we don't have just don't exist and don't for, you know, many hours out of the way.
I'm becoming abundantly aware, as I call towns and cities, and they don't have email addresses.
Yeah.
And that's, you know, that, that's just what we're going to face, and whether that is an infrastructure issue, because they don't have rock there in their area, or that's just not the way historically it's been done. Unfortunately, West Virginia is its own animal, and if you go an hour in any direction, you could be in a totally different world. So the needs of the individuals are going to drastically shift based off of what's palatable to their municipality. I mean, some things that would be allowable in Morgantown certainly would not fly in, say, Beckley, West Virginia, or Fayetteville, or some of the other places that provide services. And you kind of got to finesse for what the needs are in that community.
I appreciate it. Once again, thank you for your honor to serve.
I'm honored to do it, and I truly mean that.
First of all, just thank you. I'm, I'm listening to what you're saying, and I'm impressed by your approach, and I hope that you can implement some of these ideas. I would also encourage you, and please do, we're very interested in how this is administered, and if you could continue the conversation with us, that would be welcome.
So you weren't quite on the listserv, because we hadn't gotten to, to the city of Morgantown yet, even though I'm a first ward resident. But as I did not do to email to, to all of the email addresses I had, anytime you have a need, anytime you come back when the RRB gets released and to be more information, please don't hesitate, call me, I'll come into a meeting, I'll put on one phone call with you. If there's a way that I can find to support you, I would. I'm jokingly, maybe not so jokingly saying I'm two degrees of Kevin Bacon from anything addiction-related in the state. So I don't know that person, I know somebody that does know that person. So if this is about support or understanding what, what's needed, I'm certainly willing, able, and committed to, to make sure that I'm the best voice for Region Four that, that you'll have.
Thank you.
All right. I'm going to repeat what they also said and say thank you for coming in here and presenting, and for stopping me on my way into Mountain State to ask to come present.
Yeah.
I really appreciate that. A lot of times, people are afraid to come stand up here and tap to talk, so.
You know, being a professor, give me a space to talk, and I'll talk for hours. But my intent is to have as much transparency in this process as possible. And, and for the comments on providing transparency, the meeting minutes are posted online, the meeting is open to the public outside of executive session. They do kind of post some level of financials or expenditures directly on their website. So there is some desire of board members before I ever stepped on, because I had nothing to do with me, I didn't have to work in the process, to have some transparency. So I hope to add to that. I appreciate your time. Thank you guys so much.
All right, thank you. And I'll talk to the first ward representative to get you those contact information.
Appreciate it, buddy.
All right. Next, we have an ordinance providing for the zoning reclassification. All right, next, we have an ordinance providing for the zoning reclassification of certain parcels of real estate to be annexed into the city of Morgantown with our developmental services director, one Ricky Jaeger.
Deputy Deputy Mayor. Members of the council, just to provide some context for the ordinance this evening, three or four years ago, BFS, BFS, Brewston Farms were assisting the city about reselling four parcels of land along Brookhaven Road from R1 to V2 to start to redevelop that property. That was reviewed and approved by the City Planning Commission and ultimately adopted by City Council on April 5th, 2021. As plans to develop that property have progressed, BFS acquired additional piece of property from West Virginia Division of Highways last year, and a portion of that, while most of it was in the sixth ward already, a portion of it was not, and that is located in your packet and shown here on this map. This portion that has the hatch marking here is outside the city limits. So speaking with the applicant, because we're getting where you look at site plan review and those type of things, and make sure we're all evaluating this in one district, the applicant is working with Mr. Simonnton to submit a petition to annex the portion of real estate that's not currently in the city limits into the city, and you should expect to see ordinance on June 4th regarding active for your consideration. However, in doing that, BFS also has petitioned the city to zone that piece of property as a V2. Per city code, if an act piece of property is rotten to city limits and it's not clear where the zoning district is, it defaults to an R1, which obviously would be at the ages that are appropriate for the developer proposal. Earlier this month, the planning commission found that the applicant's proposal to rezone this piece of property was consistently the comprehensive plan and recommended that the zoning patch became to be approved by council. Staff requests that the application be moved to council's next regular meeting on June 4th for first reading. Happy to answer for any questions.
All right.
Pretty straightforward. I don't have any questions, Ricky.
Yes, sounds, we definitely want an entire piece of property or entire project to be either in or out of the city, so appreciate getting that all taken care of.
Yeah, and we really appreciate the team from BFS, because they've been working with us since day one on the project and their willingness to work with us, and much appreciated.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting us...
Great, thanks.
Absolutely.
All right, the next person up is our developmental services director.
Oh, who's this guy?
Ricky Jaeger, present. Oh, there you are. Could you please tell us about an ordinance providing for the zoning reclassification of certain parcels of real estate in the seventh ward?
Absolutely, sir.
By the way, it's great to see you this evening. Thank you for coming.
So the ordinance before you would, for consideration, would rezonate 44 Drummond Street from a pro district to an R3 multifamily residential district. While the property was previously registered with the city as a rental decades ago, that particular use ceased in 2011 when the previous owner notified the city that the building would become owner occupied. Since then, the property has lost its grandfather status with respect to permitting multifamily or mixed-use dwellings in the pro district. The applicant seeks to rezonate the property to an R3 where multifamily and/or mixed-use dwellings are permitted with site plan review. The subject property has a two-story building on it and a surface parking lot that can only be accessed via Drummond Street. Earlier this month, the planning commission found the applicant's proposal to be consistent with the comprehensive plan and recommended the next amendment be approved. The motion to recommend approval was four to zero. To provide some additional context, staff was directed by the planning commission to examine the purpose and potential use of the pro district going forward, given its access along major thoroughfares and proximity to our area neighborhood. Staff still intend to work on this issue as time permits. Staff requests that the application be moved to council's next regular meeting agenda before she...
Sir, can you...
You said, what was it, the vote, four to two, zero?
Correct.
What were the concerns?
I think the concerns extend from two things. One is the access on Drummond Street that comes from University of Collins Ferry. There was another resuming, if you recall, for friendship manner on Van Boris that was reviewed by the planning commission and approved by council, and the discussion at that time was the R3 multifamily residential district makes sense because the primary access point is off of major thoroughfare. This access point is a butt up to the existing neighborhood, so there was some discussion at the meeting about that concern. The other was the time in which it's taken staff to try to develop a proposal to look at the pro district. I understand, and I talked to Mayor Seline about this in the past, give a little history about why that was implemented to begin with, and whether the purpose and the way it was implemented is still relevant and useful at this time, because obviously we have a landowner who has a piece of property, but is really constrained about what they can do with it because of the district that it's in. So because that has not been addressed yet, there was also discussion of the planning commission to say, hey, well, this person's been working and waiting patiently, so try to move their, you know, prospects forward.
What other zoning was considered?
Pardon me?
What other zoning was considered? Is this pretty much the only...
Yes, R3 was the only thing that really...
Fits, fits with what the comprehensive plan says.
It should be that quarter long-term, looking at mixed-use higher intensities, but also trying to limit, you know, the N O V two designation where the uses are much more numerous on the commercial side. So this is kind of being a hybrid without actually having it in place already. Because it's interesting that, you know, you look at the pro district, and it doesn't allow, allows for two-family dwellings, but not multifamily dwellings. And so that was something, I think, back then when we first visited this, when you said, hmm, scratched your head and thought, well, we need to take a look at this, but again, we haven't been able to bring recommendations forward to planning commission for consideration. So that's why the applicant's here petitioning.
All through there, the idea, I think, was that it'd be some kind of a buffer, but it was sort of an odd buffer in some of the properties along the other side of Windsor were kind of strange.
Yeah.
It's, there's just been a lot of that pro that was not useful.
Yeah, and in your exhibit on your hacking, you can see here's the property, subject property being resoned in the green area, here's the pro to the west, you can see the property that's already been rezoned to R3, and then as you round the van and go up Van Boris, most of that is in the pro, and then some of it is just a sliver that runs right behind the neighborhood and the V2 business district, which I'm not sure how it ended up, so many split zones.
Yeah, so that little sliver was always just sort of odd, and...
And staff had to deal with that, especially up in the, in some of the businesses as they wanted to locate up against some of the neighborhoods, that split zoning designation has made us have to confront that a little better, deal with it. So until we can take a holistic approach and see what's best for, you know, our major commercial thoroughfares that need to be more developed, but also that butt directly to our neighborhoods, this was, this was the best option consistent with the comprehensive plan.
I would move it to the agenda.
Well, we're not there yet.
Oh, at the bottom, next section. Yep.
And I should have the applicant in here, so if there was any questions or concerns, that's here.
I'm good.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Ricky.
Good news, Ricky, you're not next on the list.
It's a double.
Unless I change my mind. All right. This leads us, all right, so I'm going to close out the presentations. Next up, we're going to open the public portion. Oh, there is no public portion because it's community.
No, there is, I'm just saying, there's not a list.
There's not a list? Oh, okay.
No, it's not.
Then open up to our public portion, rules made by council. Even though we don't have a list, if you'd like to come up and speak, you have your four minutes, please just introduce yourself and your address.
All the council people know who I am, might have a difficult day. I just want to say that I am highly impressed with the renovation in the city council chambers, and I really love the horseshoe. It kind of reminds me of the King Arthur days of the Knights of the Round Table, and I'll consider you guys half of the Knights of the Round Table since it's a horseshoe. Well, I also want to thank council for keeping the history alive with the fire department doors being in the renovation. And that's it.
Thanks.
You guys are lucky. I'm very, easy to get along with nowadays.
I like that.
You went to high school with them.
All right, would anybody else like to take this as an opportunity to come speak? No? All right. Ricky might jump up. I'm going to close the public portion. Next, we're going to have our items for discussion. First, we have an ordinance naming Monday's Alley. Who should I turn this over to? Ryan.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. This ordinance will establish a name for a currently unnamed alley that is in the first ward neighborhood, I believe near Monday's Bar and Grill. City code, Article 905, provides that city council will establish the names of the streets and ways within the city by ordinance, so this is presented in the form of ordinance, and we recommend council move this to an agenda for further action.
Okay. First off, I know it was the one that requested it, so thank you for your help with that. And of all the names that they asked us to present, Monday's was the only one available, which worked out great because people know where Monday's is. I believe it's Morgantown's oldest driver, is that right?
Careful, I'm not sure.
Careful.
You can claim it, somebody else will pay it.
And somebody that loves Al.
Careful. Is this the alley right behind Monday?
Runs parallel to... All right, with that said...
We can...
I was going to ask who brought this to us and how the names decided.
Yeah, my neighbor requested it, and then she gave me a list of names, since it's her alleyway, Monday's was on there, and it was the only one available.
I'm excited to move it to the agenda.
All right.
Sounds good.
Second, all right, very good. Move that to, she's going to be super excited, move that to the agenda. Next, we have an ordinance providing for the zoning reclassification of certain parcels of real estate to be annexed into the city of Morgantown, which we just had a presentation. Did you want to come back up? I feel like, no? Two's good. All right. This was the part.
Oh, I think we should move it to the agenda.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
By affirmation, all right. We'll move that to the agenda. And then an ordinance providing the zoning reclassification of certain parcels of real estate in the seventh ward.
I have plenty of concerns, but I think that it goes to an agenda anyway.
Was that your first? And David's the second?
We just go by affirmation.
All right, by affirmation?
Yep.
Sure.
All right.
That's true, we did go by affirmation.
That's my bad.
Nope.
And an ordinance establishing compensation for the members of the common council, the city of Morgantown.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So during the 2021-2022 classification and compensation study, our consultant reviewed comparable communities, not only for employee pay, but also council pay of the communities that responded for council pay. Only one community paid their council stipend below what Morgantown's current council pay was, and then one matched us where we currently are, which is $6,000 annually, or about $250 a meeting, or exactly $250 a meeting. Additionally, the last time council pay was changed is in 2007, which was almost 20 years ago, and the time before that was in 1987, so we seem to be on a pretty good 20-year timeline. Due to the increased demands on time, commitment, and cost of living, we're proposing that council consider moving to the agenda an ordinance that increases council pay from $250 to $350 per regular meeting, and then for council, and then from $350 to $450 a meeting for the mayor, and that would become effective July 1, 2027. So in accordance with Article 2, Section 202, the council members may determine salary for the mayor and the council members to be paid for each regular meeting they attend, but no ordinance increasing such salaries can become effective until the date of the commencement of the terms of council members elected at the next regular election, provided that election is at least six months. So since we are now alternating four-year terms, that is why the proposed date is July 1, 2027, so it would be after all of your current terms end. So that is what is before council for consideration of moving to an agenda.
All right, so we're going to vote about raising pay in three years.
Yes.
Three years.
Yep, since we do have an election every two years, but half of the council would still be on until June 30th of, part of this council is still on until June 30th of 2027. So...
Apparently, we're thinking toward the future.
Yes, we have to do a little bit more so of that with these in particular now, since we do the longer terms and alternating terms.
Okay, then with affirmation?
Yeah.
Yeah.
By affirmation, move it to...
All right, and then with that, I have one, do I have a second?
Oh, yeah.
All right, it is 7:46. I adjourn this meeting, you're welcome.
Thank you.